Great. But that may not, that's not the only question. And that's the difference from the past, right? So I'm in a moment in my life when I want to spend time with my family, or my mother has chemo, or I'm in a moment when I've been doing the same thing for 20 years and I want to go-
Just know what you're doing.
Fight the climate or whatever.
Just know what you're doing. There's a whole chapter on deferring dreams, but don't get rid of that hope dream. There's so much more. Bestselling author Bruce Feiler, the new book is The Search: Finding Meaningful Work in a Post-Career World. Bruce, thanks.
My pleasure.
We spoke last June, here and now.
North Korea's embassies do much more than diplomacy. They also rake in foreign cash, often illegally, to sustain the regime. So why is Pyongyang closing many of its embassies? Because they found a better way to bring in the bread: engaging in cryptocurrency. So the thinking goes, the embassies are not needed. That's next time on The World.
You can hear The World Monday through Thursday at 3 on Radio IQ.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Staples, with supplies and services to get business done, no matter where it gets done. From ink and toner cartridges to technology like laptops and networking accessories. More at Staples stores or staples.com.
This is Here and Now. So how is your day two of dry January going? If your New Year's resolution involves drinking less or drinking zero, well, here's some additional potential motivation. A new study from the International Agency for Research on Cancer says reducing or eliminating alcohol consumption cuts the risk of developing certain cancers. Angus Chen is cancer reporter with our editorial partners at STAT, the health and medicine publication, and he's back. Hi Angus.
Hi Scott.
This is one of those studies that analyzes a bunch of existing studies. And we got in touch with the lead author, Dr. Sue Gapster. Here's what she says.
Based on the relevant studies published to date, the working group concluded that there's sufficient evidence that compared with continuing consumption, reduction or cessation of alcohol consumption reduces the risk of oral and esophageal cancers.
Okay, so help us kind of understand what she's saying here. That is, if you stop drinking, or if you drink less, researchers found the risk of these cancers go down. Do they go down by a lot?
Yeah, it went down quite significantly, I would say, for oral cancers. If you stopped drinking alcohol for five to nine years, that was linked to a 34 relative risk reduction. So 34 risk reduction compared to people who continue to drink for this cancer. The longer you stop drinking, the greater that risk reduction is. And that was also true for esophageal cancers. The research also showed the more you cut, the greater your benefit is. So if you were drinking like three or more drinks per day, cutting out alcohol would give you a bigger benefit than someone who's now just drinking one to two drinks per day and then cut that out.
And how does alcohol cause these cancers? Esophagus cancer, oral cancers, do we know?
Yeah. So the main way that we think that alcohol causes cancer is when you drink it, it very quickly metabolizes to a compound called acetaldehyde in your body. Acetaldehyde is a pretty potent toxic compound that can cause DNA damage, and that can later on cause cancer. There are some other factors as well that can, that people think are linked to cancer as related to alcohol. One is through the changes in levels of sex hormones in the body, and that can also alter the risk of breast cancer. That's actually pretty big. I think in 2020, there were about 170,000 new cancer cases worldwide attributed to alcohol consumption, and over half of that was thought to be breast cancer.
So several things that researchers think is going on. Scientists have known for a while that stopping smoking can cut cancer risk. Do they think perhaps that cutting alcohol consumption might work the same way?
Yeah, I mean, I think alcohol and smoking can both cause cancer through your exposure to toxic compounds or harmful compounds. And reducing your exposure to those compounds is likely to also reduce your risk of developing associated cancers. You know, one interesting thing about smoking and alcohol is that they work in a sort of synergistic way when it comes to your cancer risk. Smoking can change the levels of certain bacteria in your gastrointestinal tract, which metabolizes alcohol to this toxic compound, acetaldehyde. And so you end up finding that smokers who drink end up with more levels of this compound in their body than people who drink but don't smoke.
I see. So just backing up Angus, what about the whole thing about red wine being good for you if you drink a little bit every day? Is that a myth? How does that fit into this?
Yeah, so this is a belief that's really persisted for many decades, and it started from some research in the 1980s that was trying to understand why people in France or people on a Mediterranean diet had such low levels of heart disease. And some researchers at the time pointed to compounds in red wine called polyphenols that they thought could help your heart health. The problem is that even though that was shown to be, there's some evidence for that in mice, it hasn't been shown for humans. And the other thing is that some of these early studies were compounded by other factors, lifestyle and dietary factors that might account for that cardiovascular benefit. So people on a Mediterranean diet, you know, they eat a lot of fresh fruits and vegetables. They may also have a more active lifestyle. So now experts look at this belief, and they don't think there's strong evidence for it.
And Angus, you know, alcohol is so infused into modern life. I mean, how many times are we asked, you know, what can I get you to drink, right? For people seeking to scale back this January and beyond, what does the evidence tell us works?
Yeah, I mean, I think the evidence suggests some of the best ways to avoid alcohol consumption is to really set healthy habits around not drinking. One way you might do that is setting a drinking goal. So like decide how much you want to drink per week and try to stick to that limit. Another thing you could try to do is not keep alcohol in the house so that you're not drinking at home. You know, you can just sort of drink moderately if you're going out to a social setting or social event. And finally, I think an important thing is if you wanted some help with this, you can ask the people around you for support. I think if you are hoping to try to cut alcohol, or you know someone who is trying to cut alcohol, sort of being that person and saying, hey, let me help you do this, or maybe let's just have one drink and not go beyond that. It's something that we can all do for each other.
Yeah. Angus Chen is cancer reporter with our editorial partners at STAT, the health and medicine publication. Angus, thanks again.
Thanks Scott.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Scott Tong in Washington DC.
I'm Robin Young in Boston. This is Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and BetterHelp, committed to supporting mental health through therapy. Clients are matched with one of 25,000 therapists and can communicate via video, chat, or phone
I often say that this is not a campaign, it's a series of court dates wrapped around some debates. And that's really been true. These court cases are the centerpiece of Donald Trump's life right now, and with him as the likely Republican nominee, the entire election.
I'm Michael Barbaro. That's today on The Daily from The New York Times.
That's The Daily, Monday through Friday at 6:30 on Radio IQ. To support public radio for decades to come, consider naming WVTF Music and Radio IQ as the beneficiary of your IRA. For more information, contact your financial advisor or call us at 1-800-856-8900.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISC FM Wise,
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
We're now, I'm calling the January 2nd, 2024 council meeting to order, and I'll ask our Clerk, Ms. Susie McCord, to please call her up.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Pretty?
Here.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Volason?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And foremost, President. All right, thank you all for coming. Let me just say, council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7 o'clock PM, and Saturdays from 10 AM to 5 o'clock PM. And let me just say, for those of you that don't know, that's continuous, from 10, from 10 AM to 5 PM. So you turn that on Channel 3, and you're gonna see today's session all day long. I don't know what you get out of there, but you'll be able to see it all day long. And video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. And council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. All right. All right, today, our invocation will be delivered by Mayor Sherman Lee. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mayor Sherman Lee. I'm trying to figure out how all of that got going, but this is first meeting of the year. So if you will please stand and join me as we have our invocation. First and foremost, Lord, we come to thank you for allowing us to see another year. We ask you now, as we come to this afternoon, to do the business of this city and this community, we want your wisdom and support as we begin this meeting. And may everything that we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your help. We ask for your guidance and direction as we go forth. And we thank you for all that you continue to do in our community, and we ask your blessings as we enter into a new year. We thank you, and we give you praise, and we recognize you for all that you do. It is in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, and let me say, we do have some seats here for those of you that want to be seated here, and so please choose where you want to sit or be here. First of all, I have some announcements. The city's Clerk's Office is accepting applications for three upcoming vacancies on the Roanoke City School Board for three-year terms of office, expiring on June 30, 2024. Three-year terms of office will commence on July 1, 2024, and end on June 30, 2027. All right, school board, incumbent school board trustees are Michael L. Cherry II, Diane M. Cosola, and Mark K. Kathy. And Mark Kathy is not eligible for reappointment, so that is one position that we have to appoint, someone new. And the other two positions are, they have to choose that they want to continue to serve on our school board. Applications and information describing the duties and responsibilities of trustees of the Roanoke City School Board are available on the city of Roanoke's webpage at www.roanokeva.gov, or may be obtained by contacting the city's Clerk's Office, Room 456, here in the North City Tower Municipal Building at 215 Church Avenue Southwest, between hours of 8 AM and 5 o'clock PM, Monday through Friday. Now, let me, and I'll do something, and I'll continue to do this throughout the first quarter of this year. The deadline to receive applications is Monday, March 11, at 5 o'clock PM. For questions or any additional information, please contact the city's Clerk's Office at 540-853-2541, or by email at clerk@roanokeva.gov. Say that again, March 11, 2024. Practically every year, we have somebody that's applying, March 11, at 4:45 PM, and a little bit after, and then we have to talk about that or extend that. But we want to make sure you understand that, and get your applications in. And as, and as normal, we welcome all applicants and candidates for positions, because this is your city, your government, and we want you to be a part of it. And I, I feel that the school board is probably one of the most highest civic duties we can have, as we think about education and the importance of education. So, but if you want to, to apply, please do so. And the Clerk's Office is here to help you, either on application, or the things you need to do, or to find out what your duties and responsibilities are as a member of the school board. And we use the term "school board" and "trustees" interchangeably, but it's the same thing on the school board. So we welcome your application. All right, the next item on our agenda. Organizational meeting. The city code requires that the first meeting of council in the month of January be referred to as the organizational meeting, at which time council will adopt a resolution establishing the days, times, and places of regular meetings to be held by the council during the calendar year. So, adoption of the meeting scheduled for Roanoke City Council commencing January 1, 2024, and terminating December 31, 2024. I need a motion on the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution establishing a meeting schedule for city council commencing January 1, 2024, and terminating December 31, 2024.
All right, are there any comments by members of council? I've seen none, Madam Clerk. I'm going to go.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. All right. And that is the schedule, that for all of our meetings and what have you, so you can see that right now, and as we put that out so that everybody will be aware of when we meet. All right, next item on the agenda is presentations and acknowledgements. And I will come down to the lower podium, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Webb, is she, Sissy Webb, is she here?
She's there.
Okay, I didn't see you down there. Let me just say this, a few words. Our most, and I feel like I need to say it to you all, since we understand this, but our most valuable assets are employees, employees, no matter where you work. You're very valuable to us, and we recognize and appreciate your service. And so we're gonna recognize some people as long-term important this afternoon. And thank all of you for your service, your commitment, and your dedication. And that's what makes us feel this all-American city sometimes. Kind of smile a little bit, man. We're not, we're not cutting the budget or anything. We'll get to that later on in the year. First organizational meeting. All right, we got some citizens, and I'm, I'm gonna ask Swirup to call the name of the citizens, and if you come up, I want to recognize you with the award.
City employees with 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35, and 40 years of service will be honored at a recognition breakfast to be held on Tuesday, January 9, 2024, at the Burgling Center Bella Vista Room. So like Mayor said, when I call your name, please come up to be honored with your gift. For 40 years of service, Jennings Tardy from the Police Department.
Get a photo op.
Always. I was gonna say, I never know what I'm on duty or not.
All right, ready? Three, two, one.
Congratulations, and thank you for your service. If anybody wants to have a few words about you now.
With 30 years of service, Christopher Chittam, Planning and Building Development.
I just want to say something first about Chris, because I feel kind of guilty because I put a lot on him. There's some issues, planning and development, there's issues. Contact Chris Chittam. Thank you for being here.
Right, we got to ride him.
All right.
And last but not least, with 30 years of service, Leisha Cook, City Attorney's Office.
All right, City Attorney's Office. All right, the next order of business is a hearing of citizens upon public matters. Excuse me, city council sets this term as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for a response, a recommendation, or report to council, as he may deem appropriate. Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens signed up to speak?
Yes, we have two citizens.
All right.
The first speaker is Naomi Clements.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Naomi Clements. I live in northwest Roanoke, near 10th and Williamson. I volunteer with One Valley Incorporated Neighborhood Cleanup in the Carver Garden, and at the Hope Center, and I work at Roanoke College. So I come today to talk to you about the Climate Action Plan and our shared concerns about youth violence. I want to commend the city staff for developing a great climate action plan for Roanoke to cope with the rising temperatures we're experiencing, and I thank the city council and the planning commission for adopting the plan. I am concerned that on the last, the last paragraph on page 21 of the draft climate action plan, which was presented to the city council last year, was removed before it went to the planning commission for a vote. That paragraph read, Phase Two will focus on healing historical trauma as a prerequisite for effective resilience planning, and it also spoke about working with Northwest Roanoke Youth and other community stakeholders. So I don't know why that was removed, because we know Northwest Roanoke has experienced historical trauma, and now some of the hottest areas of the city are in Northwest Roanoke. However, that goal of healing Northwest Roanoke especially is included in the Hope for Heat Resilience Plan, of which the city is a partner. And the Climate Action Plan is a very good plan, and it repeatedly speaks to the need for equity and implementation of the plan, which will surely include measures to help Northwest Roanoke heal. The Residential Pathways to Action and Progress section of the plan urges residents to take advantage of tax rebates for new energy-efficient appliances and weatherization programs. Tax rebate programs require homeowners to pay for the improvements upfront and then wait months for the rebates. Many homeowners may not have the upfront money necessary to take advantage of these programs. I urge the city to find ways to help with the upfront costs of these programs, so that all city residents who need and want these benefits are able to receive them. The City Plan 2040, which is cited in the final Climate Action Plan, includes a policy, page 101, to increase the percentage of tree canopy within the city to sixty percent through increased funding and expansion of the urban tree planting program. Benefits of tree planting cited in the plan include cooling, cleaner air, stress, and crime reduction, and other benefits. These are very, very good plans. Today I want to ask you to consider how these plans could also help achieve a reduction in violence in the city of Roanoke. The Gun Violence Prevention Commission commissioned an assessment of youth and gang violence in Roanoke, which was completed December of 2021. Community leaders, agencies serving youth, community residents, and 259 students and youth were surveyed. Higher percentages of youth from Northwest and Southwest Roanoke were surveyed, as higher gang activity has been reported in these areas. First time I made a trip to the city to think about moving here, I saw gang signs in the neighborhood I was considering, but gangs all over. When asked what they thought was the best way to prevent violence and gang activity among young people, the response choice with the highest positive response was more jobs for young people, followed by more free individualized counseling and more activities for youth after school. When youth who identified as gang members were asked why they joined a gang, the top three responses were for money, for protection, and for fun. When given statements about gang membership and asked if they agreed or disagreed, the highest strongly agree response was to the statement, "Being a member of a gang makes me feel like I'm a useful person to have around." And the next highest response, the highest strongly agree or agree, were, "My gang is like a family to me, being a member of gang makes me feel like I really belong somewhere, my gang members provide a good deal of support and loyalty for one another, being in a gang makes me feel important." The report did note the sample size of students surveyed was small, so more research could be done, but as a former middle school and high school teacher, I believe that a larger survey would show similar results. So how is this related to the Climate Action Plan?
Go ahead, give a few.
Thank you.
Go ahead, I'll give a few more.
I'll be quick. I suggest that hiring young people in our city to carry out as much of the Climate Action Plan as possible would contribute to meeting the goals of the Climate Action Plan and help the youth of Roanoke avoid the pitfalls of gang membership and violence. Hiring and training teenagers and young adults at good wages for tree planting and home weatherization would give them the jobs they need and fulfill their desire to feel useful and important. These would not be dead-end fast food or real jobs that are so often the only jobs available to teenagers. These would be jobs right in their own neighborhood, doing something that is very much needed in their community. Working in a group, doing something worthwhile, helps people feel they belong, fosters friendship and loyalty. Imagine the pride the youth of our city could feel walking down a street in their neighborhood and seeing the trees that they helped plant grow as they grow into adulthood. Imagine the sense of accomplishment and importance they will feel to walk by a home they helped weatherize. Imagine the bonds forged between the homeowners, whose homes are improved by weatherization, and the teenagers and young adults who did the work. This would be community-building work. These jobs would provide work experience and skills that could carry forward to further employment. I did some tutoring in Northwest Roanoke, tutor reading and math, and I've seen the city test scores. We could also make, combine this educational program. Kids could learn some math skills, measuring, as they cut the materials needed for weatherization. So I urge you to put the policies adopted in the Climate Action Plan together with the mission of curbing violence in Roanoke and carry our future, our city, forward to a more peaceful future. And thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker is Stephen Mjaki.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
First, I want to say, extend a personal thank, welcome to Chief Scott Booth, who is a good friend of my twin brother. My twin brother used to be the superintendent of schools in Danville, and they got to know each other pretty well. So I already feel like he's a friend of mine, and I think we have some good things to look forward to. But the main thing in the context of what's happening in this world, this community, is I ask you to pray with me. I ask the Most High to make us instruments of peace. Where there's hatred, let us sow love. Where there's injury, pardon. Where there's doubt, faith. Where there's despair, hope. Where there's darkness, light. Where there's sadness, joy. Divine Creator, grant that we may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, it is in dying that we are born to eternal life. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last speaker.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is the joint meeting of City Council and the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, here in the council chamber. There are some seats that are outlined here for members of Mr. Major, Ms. Williams, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Harvey, and Dr. Anderson. Let me welcome each of you to City Council. Let me just go over some what I call ground rules before we get going. We're not gonna talk about today positions and who's in a position and all of that. We're gonna do that probably in the next month or so, in a closed session. But today we want to talk about, and you all probably already have the agenda, the update on the framework, how that's gonna be implemented, and funds to be received for that implementation, and activities, current activities of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. So that's what we're gonna talk about today. And with that, I'm going to turn this session over to Vice Mayor, Dr. Joe Cobb, for a discussion of items. Dr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. I think first we're gonna turn to Bob for an overview of the city's framework.
Yeah, and actually, I'm gonna ask the chief to come up and he's gonna brief you. So what I ask the chief to do to kind of begin sort of the conversation that you all are gonna have, Council and the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, is every time the Gun Violence Prevention Commission meets, the Police Department provides kind of an update on sort of current statistics and other data points. And of course, a portion of that council gets in the weekly update that we forward also. And so we wanted to kind of start with that, with the chief providing sort of the data of where we are, where we currently are, where we ended the year. And not only just the data piece, but also looking at things like clearance rates for investigations and those other kinds of things as well, because of course, as you all know, the work that the city is involved in involves all categories of prevention intervention and ultimately enforcement and justice as well. So we try to encompass all of that. So I've asked the chief to give just that quick kind of overview, answer any questions that you all might have regarding that, and then certainly turn it back over to you all to continue your conversations. Chief.
Good afternoon. Mister Mayor, Mister Vice Mayor, members of council, members of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, members of our community that are here with us today. So this is gonna be a brief overview, and we're gonna talk a little bit about overall numbers, and then clearance rates, and specifically how they relate to our gun violence. So I would direct your attention to the Part One Crime Statistics slide. So if you look at that, we are comparing 2022 to 2023 overall. So when you look at overall violent crime in our community, right now, and this is January the second, so numbers can fluctuate, this is very early, but right now, when you look at the overall numbers, we are down in overall violent crime by about 4.76%, so almost 5% overall. So that's good, but it's bad when we look at our homicides and our domestic violence aggravated assaults, and our aggravated assaults are up slightly. So when you look at aggravated assaults, 245 in 2022 and 250 in 2023. Our domestic violence aggravated assaults, we had 60 in 2022, and then we had 84 this year, which gives us a 40% increase. And then when you look at our homicides, we had 18 homicide incidents in 2022, and then 26 in 2023, which puts us at 44.44% increase in our overall homicides. Now, grim news, but when I look at our rapes and our robberies, we see some pretty significant declines. So we had 86 rapes reported to the Roanoke City Police Department in 2022, we had 42 such incidents reported in 2023, which is a 51% decrease, and our robberies from 95 to 78, which is almost an 18% decrease in those reported crimes. Like I said, that puts us almost to a 5% overall decrease in our violent crime. When you look at our property crime, our burglaries, we had 507 of those in 2022 that reported, and 444 in 2023, which is about a 12% decrease in reported burglaries. Our larcenies were just over 3,300 in 2022, and in 2023, just over 3,000. So about, almost an 8% decrease in overall larcenies. Motor vehicle theft, 415 in 2022, and in 2023, we had 298 of those, which is right about a 28% decrease. Arson, 24 in 2022, and 24 again this year. So zeroed out on that, so no increase, no decrease. And overall property crime, just about a 10% decrease. And when you put those numbers together overall, looking at all those crimes, we're at about a 9.7% decrease in crime in our community when you compare 2022 to 2023. Like I said, early on, but that's still, I would rather have a decrease obviously than an increase. So looking at gun-related homicides, of those incidents earlier, 22 of those are considered gun-related homicide incidents. We had 11 cases closed by arrest, and 11 cases are under active investigation. So that's 50% of those cases that are cleared by arrest. And I believe two of those have already gone to court, and both of those have gleaned convictions. So once again, still early on, those cases will be working through the system as we move forward in 2023. Also, looking at all homicide cases, 31 total murder investigations, this is actual deceased individuals, had two suspicious deaths involving children worked by our special victims units, and detectives are waiting on the autopsy results. Preliminary information received, the medical examiner's offices indicated the results will likely be undetermined. Therefore, these two incidents, while being investigated as suspicious death, are not officially classified as homicide investigations. We have one homicide that is being worked by another jurisdiction, that's Virginia State Police in Bedford County. 28 total murders worked by the RPD Major Crimes Unit. 21 of the 28 are closed by arrest or awaiting indictments. And overall, this results in a 75% clearance rates on homicides thus far. The national clearance rates for homicides are about 53%, so well above the national average. Look at our overall major crimes investigations in 2023, 275 cases, and I won't just go down the list, but 27 active, 67 inactive overall. When you look at the results, it's a 65.8% clearance rate for the unit, so well above the national average with our major crimes unit. I wanted to highlight a couple of our initiatives with our other partners. This is the Star City Drug and Violent Crime Task Force, which is made up of Roanoke City, Roanoke County, Virginia State Police, the City of Salem, Vinton, and our Virginia State Police partners, I hadn't already said that. So this is what they did in 2023, preliminary results, but they seized over 1,300 grams of heroin or fentanyl, over 27,000 grams of methamphetamines from our city streets, 2,600 grams of cocaine, almost 2,700 grams of marijuana, 106 illegal firearms were seized, 127 fugitives were brought to justice. And many of these fugitives were those wanted for homicides in our community. So our Star City Drug and Violent Crime Task Force works hand-in-hand with our homicide units. They get the information early on, once we've identified a suspect, and a big chunk of our fugitives, they helped us bring to justice. And US currency, just over $63,000. Another partnership we wanted to highlight was our Bold Blue Line Virginia State Police Partnership, where they come in and sometimes they ride with Roanoke City Police Officers, we ride with them. Served 89 felony arrests, 67 warrants served, 67 misdemeanors, seven drug charges, 43 illegal firearms seized, 172,00,000 grams of illegal narcotics. When you look at their traffic enforcement by the VSP motor units, much of this information is gained from us. They ask us where they would like us to focus for here, and focus on in the city of Roanoke. Some of this comes from our community forums that we've done, where folks come in and complain about speeding in their neighborhoods, and we give that information to the Virginia State Police Motor Unit. They issued 516 traffic, they had 516 traffic stops, 965 traffic summonses, and issued 189 warnings. And I believe that was just from the end of September, right, Jerry? So from the end of September through the last part of 2023, we ended up with all that work from our Virginia State Police partners. So they certainly could be commended for that. 2023 community outreach events, the aforementioned community town hall meetings, we had eight of those. Those are a big deal for us. I really enjoy being a part of that. It's something we did not do in other communities that I've been a part of. We had over 350 citizen attendees, and I won't even go down the list to talk about all our partners there. But obviously, members of the City Council, the mayor was there, I think, at our last one, members of the City Manager's Office, and you can see the rest. But always very well attended, and we are helped to run those by our citizen volunteers. They come in and help serve food and what have you. Other events, April assignment of personnel to our Community Response Bureau resulted in increased community engagement efforts. So we would not have been able to do these town hall, community meetings without the reassignment of certain members to our Community Response Bureau, so we could get our community engagement really up and going. And in addition to those town hall meetings, we had over 100 events or outreach opportunities to include business, religious organization, apartment complex security assessments, neighborhood watch meetings, and outreach to Goodwill HQ, Trunk or Tree, Badges and Buddy, Juneteenth events, Coffee with the Cop, and scouting events. So when you look at, it's our last slide, our 2023 Reset Impact. So we had 22 deployments in response to homicides in our city, 10 deployments focused on gunshot wounds, eight deployments targeted hotspots within the community. Many times those hotspots were determined based off of our I-STAR team, our crime analysis team. One deployment was initiated based on a citizen's request, and two deployments were dedicated follow-ups to previous engagements. We have the participants listed there, once again, too many to really acknowledge, but that's a very robust group that comes together in response to trauma in our community. Other initiatives that we wanted to highlight were with our Youth and Recreational Opportunities Partnership with the YMCA of the Blue Ridge, 15 young people served. Our boxing and brawling Box Fit Program at Norwich Recreational Center, over seven children served per session, 42 sessions held, total of 318 children served for the year. Our Teen Apprenticeship Cohort Partnership with City Human Resource, 14 graduates, and our youth and young adult mentoring department. City Human Resource, 14 graduates. And our Youth and Young Adult Mentoring Partnership with Juvenile Court Services Unit, Roanoke City Public Schools, Blue Ridge Behavioral Health, and 54 individuals served. Trauma-Based Counseling Service referrals, 24 individuals served. So that's the summation of our 2023 Reset Impact. And that's it for my presentation, but I'm certainly open to any questions if you might have those.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a couple of comments with regards to the town hall meetings. I like that. You all will be continuing them, I assume?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have any coming up in the next month?
I think we have one next Wednesday, I believe, right Jerry?
Tell you in just a second, sir.
Okay.
On the 10th, we have the next.
So on the 10th.
January 10th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that one would be?
Goodwill HQ.
Okay. And the time? 6:30? 6 o'clock, 6:30?
See, I knew you were going to try to trip me up, Ms. Moonrose.
You know that, you know.
6:30?
6:30, okay.
6:00 PM. I will send you the proper information.
Okay, I just want the public to hear this way.
I got you. We'll make sure we get that out.
Thank you. And then just another comment, from what I've been hearing in the community, as you have been on duty here over the, how many months now?
Two months.
Okay, two months, that you're building trust in the community, that people do like what you're doing, and I like hearing that, as well as what the Reset Team is doing with community volunteers, and bringing in others to work with them, especially over in the Northwest community. So I did just want to share that.
Good. Thank you for sharing that with us. We appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, anybody?
Mr. Bull. I mean, I'm sorry.
It's fine. It's because of New Year. Thank you most for the presentation and update on all the work that's been done so far, and just your short time in Roanoke. But one thing that I'd like to know that wasn't particularly in there, as we're having our budget discussions later today, what are your needs? What are the resources that this council can help provide you to help further your goals and initiatives, especially as we're looking forward at this next budget? And I'm sure we'll have more on that at some point, but just anything that comes top of mind.
So, that's a big question, and I wish I had prepared for that beforehand. But certainly, working with the city manager, he's certainly been responsive to what I feel that we need as a brand-new chief. You know, staffing is an issue, and I certainly don't think that council or the city manager is going to solve that overnight, but we will get there. You know, we will build a brand and get those vacancies filled. The smart use of technology, when we request that, and we're already working on our real-time crime center, we're working on things that can become a force multiplier in our community to really make us solve crime as it occurs, right? So we want to get much better at that. And one thing that I will say, I have to recognize Deputy Chief Stokes for this, and former Chief Roman, you already had started conversations with the Office of the Attorney General and other partners, Department of Justice, to open some funding streams coming in like that. So I know we received a considerable amount of money in 2022, I believe at the end of '22, that we'll be using for that real-time crime center. So anything that we can help, that you can help us augment that, because I think that's going to be huge for our community, augment that will be a good thing.
You got it. And my very first meeting on council in 2023 is when the money officially came through.
Yes, gosh.
That's all. Thank you.
I just have one quick comment, Chief. I just wanted to say I'm really pleased to see the numbers go down for the rate, almost 51 percent.
Yes, ma'am.
And I remember when I first became a member of Roanoke City Council, that was something we were struggling with, and to have it reduced by over 51 percent is really pleasing to me. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Chief, let me ask you, do we still have the domestic violence outfit in the police department that we had?
Yes, sir. We do.
Okay. And I was reading something when you went over domestic violence. Are you, what's the domestic violence incident reports?
So we have, so what we reported on, and that was the Type 1 crimes, that would be domestic violence aggravated assaults. So that isn't all domestics. That doesn't include misdemeanor domestic assaults. That includes what we consider aggravated assaults, where there's a breaking of the skin, where there's broken bones or what have you. So those are the most severe domestic violence assaults. There also is a misdemeanor domestic violence assault, which is not in the Part One Crime Statistics.
Okay. Do they still operate if there's a domestic violence issue? That section goes out?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor. They do. And I actually, you know, I've been meeting with all the units in the department, and sitting down with them, and seeing what they need. And I actually just met with them, I think it was last Wednesday or Thursday. It's a great group. We had a vacancy for a professional staff position that was just filled, and she's going to do phenomenal things. She's going to break down some language barriers that we've been dealing with, so that's going to be good. Very impressed with that group and their focus and what they're doing to reduce those incidents in our community.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, members of council?
Yeah, I just have one follow-up, Chief. When you were talking about the Star City Drug and Violent Crime Task Force, we talk a lot about the intersections of drug use and violence, and how they're connected, not just with gun violence, but with other forms of violence too. And we're also just learning and seeing on the streets an increase in fentanyl, and cases involving fentanyl. And according to the latest statistics that I've seen locally, fentanyl is now the leading contributor to overdose deaths. Can you share anything additionally that you all or the task force is working on to work with the collective response and other entities to help address that?
Well, certainly, you know, when you look at fentanyl, the scourge of fentanyl is not just a City of Roanoke problem, it's everywhere, right? That's really become the drug du jour, and it's very cheap to produce, and it comes in at an alarming rate, to say the least. I think the fact that we have the Star City Drug and Violent Crime Task Force, that we have that entity, and I guess that's been up and running about a year, somewhere about a year, over a year?
A year, six years.
Okay, so a bit over a year. And that was, you know, the municipalities, the counties, really looked at what can we do collaboratively to impact our drugs and violence. And, you know, we have a number of members from each of those named agencies working together. And the big key of that is focus. So they work with the I-STAR team to get that data, and they go back and forth with constant communication, intelligence sharing. I think that's big. I think that's huge. Virginia State Police are huge collaborators with that, as well as when they do the Bold Blue Line, when they also come in here, it's not just the traffic enforcement, but their investigators are also working with our drug investigators to go after that fentanyl issue. So collaboration is key. We also do some things with DEA. We have task forces, officers working with them. But that collaboration piece is dynamic. They have intelligence that we don't have, and vice versa. So as long as we can share that and stay focused. With the fentanyl, all drugs are certainly innately tied to violence, but fentanyl being the predominant drug, it's just out there more.
Thank you. And I know that homicides, not homicides, but overdose deaths, fatalities, were on a level last year as they were the year before, four times the number of gun-related homicides, which often isn't reported or underreported.
Yeah.
But I think what's also underreported is the work that our harm reduction teams are doing in the city. And I think there's still a kind of a stigma and confusion about why that's so important in reducing overdoses in the long term.
Yes.
And I know that you and Fire and EMS see that a lot, but I just wanted to thank you for everything that you all are doing and your expanded knowledge of that, so that when you're working with those harm reduction teams, you're working in sync.
Yes, sir. Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Sanchez-Dom.
Hi, Chief. My question is, is the new person that was just hired to help out with domestic violence, will they be doing something else, or just domestic violence?
I think she's going to be doing more than just the domestics.
Okay.
Not 100% on that, but I'm pretty sure she is. I believe she might be newer than me. I think she's only been on about two weeks, I believe. But yeah, she'll have an expanded role. And I know we spoke about that, the need to increase communication. I think that's a, you know, they work on a lot more than just domestic violence. They also do other sexual assaults and issues with vulnerable populations, with children in our community. So she'll have an expanded role in that.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Appreciate that.
I think our next part of the presentation is an update on funds received to help with implementation. Bob, do you want to take part of that?
Yeah, I'll just kind of introduce it and then let you and Angie kind of go from there, or anybody else that's on the commission. So this was really just intended to kind of update the council on a couple of other sources of funding Chief made mention to the partnership that we have with the Attorney General's Office, and they certainly have been very helpful and continue to be very helpful. And so we just wanted to kind of update you on a couple of grants that are currently active, as in, like, we've been notified, in some cases, we've actually begun the paperwork to receive the dollars, and in other cases, we've only been notified and haven't even gotten to that next step with it yet. But these will continue to fund some of the programs that you'll be talking about here in just a few moments. So I don't know, Angie, if you want to mention those.
Sure. Good afternoon. So just kind of a little reminder, through the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, some of the grant funds that the commission's been able to secure, the city or the police department's been able to secure over the last couple of years, has been $25,000 from the Department of Criminal Justice Services, and this was for the gun violence community assessment. And this assessment went toward developing a plan to identify and prevent and intervene with youth and gang violence in the community. In July of 2021, the Gun Violence Intervention Program Grant, which again was additional funds from the Department of Criminal Justice Services, these funds went to support the development or the creation of the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Coordinator, which is currently Christopher Roberts, and then two additional positions to youth and gang violence prevention outreach workers, and then other programs related to prevention intervention efforts that were pertaining to youth and gang violence. We did do a budget amendment for those funds. As you know, we struggled with some staffing delays. So what we ended up utilizing some of those funds for, in addition to staffing, were gun locks, the Gun Violence Prevention Commission Awareness Campaign, cameras and lighting with the Roanoke Redevelopment Housing Authority, in addition to the support for the youth and gang violence prevention team. The Attorney General's Office provided the organization $300,000 of ARPA funds. Those funds went to continue to fund the two youth and gang violence prevention outreach workers that work out of the City Manager's Office, in addition to creating a youth and gang violence prevention outreach worker for Reset. Additional funds from the Attorney General's Office were for the Teen Apprenticeship Program and other Reset programming. Then more recently, with the Police Department, a 2024 Firearms Violence Intervention and Prevention Grant. This will come to you all hopefully in the next meeting. But just a little background, the funding for this is the opportunity to hire a firearm violence intervention prevention coordinator, and some administrative funds to work with the investigative techniques, training with Roanoke City Police Officers. But additionally, a more collaborative effort looking across the city, the organizations, and different opportunities that are currently existing for intervention and prevention efforts that are underway, to really be able to enhance and communicate those efforts out. And then, of course, the American Rescue Plan Act funding of the $64.5 million, of the $2 million that was dedicated to support the efforts. So the most recent one, again, goes back to the Department of Criminal Justice, securing those funds, the $223,000.
Thank you.
And let me ask you a question on that.
Sure.
What is the firearm violence prevention intervention coordinator? Is that a position? What is that, what's that intended to do?
So the funding that we just were able to secure is two-year grant funds, and the goal of that is to have that employee hopefully house out of the City Manager's Office or the community engagement team initially, for the, at least for the two years of the grant cycle. That'll work collaboratively with Police Department, Reset, the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, our Star City Safe, whole government approach to gun violence, and of course, Chris's unit.
And Mayor, this is a, as Angie mentioned, this is a, we just received notice of the receipt of this grant, so the hope is, at your next meeting, we'll be bringing that information forward for action to receive and appropriate those funds. So position hasn't been created, hasn't been filled yet, because we just received notice of this funding. And there is another indication of funding, that we've received indication that the funding is coming, but again, we've not yet received additional details that are associated with actually the Real-Time Crime Center, and some additional funding that's coming from the Attorney General's Office that will support that also. This is, again, part of that effort of sort of the partnership with the Attorney General's Office, the U.S. Attorney's Office, and others. So in both of these instances, I think actually the Attorney General reached out to us, the office did, with these funding sources, and indicating that they wanted us to actually apply for these programs. So that's how we're actually connecting in those, in these two areas.
Well, thank you. It's good news. I just want to, you know, as citizens, watch us on council, and they'll ask you, how is that going to help, what is that position going to do? And I just want to be able to share that with them. But I understand that until we'll have more information later on as that comes.
We haven't even let HR know that we got the funding yet, so we'll be working on that job description over the next couple of weeks.
All right. Any other questions from members of council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last part is to share current activities, initiatives, and a look ahead to 20, this year, actually, we're already in '24. Each of you received a packet. I'm not going to go through the whole packet, just to review the first couple of pages. I will share that at the back of the packet, and we have extra copies for anyone who would like those. Maybe I should give those to Susie. Pass those down to Susie. The packet contains an overview, the Gun Violence Prevention Commission's strategic plan, which was adopted in April, a full update from Neighbors United, which is a collaborative program with United Way of Roanoke Valley, and the Prevention Intervention Street Team, which is the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Team in the City of Roanoke. A new program that will launch this year called Lock In Safety, Unlock Hope, which is an expansion of our Gun Lock Program, to purchase additional gun locks and provide educational resources. That's a partnership with the Police Department and with nonprofit organizations. And then in the very back is a preliminary report on the most recent completion of ARPA-funded programs related to prevention intervention and interruption of violence. There were, I believe, 13 organizations that were funded or received funding for that. We are still pulling together data. City staff is working on that, and we hope to have a more full report in February or March at the latest on that. But the information that's contained here is more qualitative information, and that's in the back of the report, so that's for your reference. I want to thank our commissioners, all of whom have served since the beginning of the commission. Shakira and Dr. Anderson expressed their regrets for not being able to be here today. We also want to thank Commissioners Nicole Ross, Stacy Shepherd, and Decca Knight, who have served and are continuing to do this work in the community through their different organizations. On the second page, you'll find initiatives and accomplishments. I just want to highlight some of these. As I mentioned, we adopted our strategic plan, which included the establishing of three new working groups. These are comprised of commission members, as well as community partners, covering areas like community and neighborhood engagement, education and research, and grant and fund development. We established quarterly community stakeholder meetings. The next one of those will be in February. We worked with council to amend and adopt the existing ordinance to reflect the new funding policy guidelines, to align those with the Arts Commission and the Human Services Advisory Board. We launched a second parenting video, which is a part of our program called Star City Family. I've included the link here. That has been shared out with organizations that work with families and youth and parents. The two videos focus on balance discipline and deliberate development, and those have been very well received and utilized. As most of you know, we launched on December 13th our What's Good Roanoke campaign, which arose out of the Youth and Gang Violence Community Assessment, and the subsequent meetings we had with youth and family members in the community and stakeholders, that really talked about the need to do a better job of connecting people with resources in the community, having kind of a one-stop-shop. So we created a website, and that can be found at what'sgoodroanoke.org. Since the launch, we've had 1,200 unique visitors to the website. We've also launched Facebook and Instagram, and we'll continue to grow social media presence, and you'll see advertisements on. on bus wraps, on billboards, and other locations. We're also looking to expand to include multiple languages as part of that program. As I mentioned before, the Gun Lock Distribution Program, which will be expanding, the initial program purchased 8,000 gun locks, and those went for distribution through Roanoke City Public Schools. We kept, as that became an active program, we kept having people ask for more, at community events, nonprofit organizations. So, that was driving the idea that we need to expand this. But we also realized we need to expand education. Not everyone who receives a gun lock knows how to appropriately use it, or to secure weapons. And so, we want to make sure that that will be an active part of the program, and more details on that are included in the packet. The second round of grant funding for ARPA dollars is underway. We just had the deadline end on Sunday night, and we had 26 organizations submit proposals totaling $656,000. And we have $300,000 to distribute. So, that's going to be a challenge. But I wanted to share that with you because it conveys the commitment and investment that our faith-based organizations, our nonprofit organizations in the community, how much they care about our city, how much they care about our youth and our families, that they took the time to submit proposals. So, we're very excited about that. Our second Gun Violence Community Assessment is underway. This has a little different focus, whereas the first focus was more on youth and gang violence. This is on the larger question of gun violence in the community, and those who are directly or indirectly impacted by it. We haven't had as high a response in the surveys, and I think part of that is because the questions are a little bit different than they were the first time. However, we have nearly reached saturation from a research model, which allows us to have a good sample to draw from, and we are not at the end of this. So, we have, we've received over 400 surveys to date, 24 interviews have currently been completed. There was just an outreach effort in the last two weeks of December. 400 door hangers were distributed in some of the hotspot neighborhoods in northwest Roanoke, encouraging people to fill out the surveys or sign up for interviews. We've also distributed information to all nine housing authority communities, in terms of outreach. We're finalizing with Roanoke City Public Schools, the parental consent process that's needed for them to distribute a youth-based survey through the school system, and that should be ready to go within the next week. So, the whole process was six months, and we're about halfway through that six months. So, we hope to bring a final report by the end of February back to council. Couple of updates on programs that we support. The TAP Gun Violence Emergency Relocation Project, which was secured through funding from the state. I wanted to share with you that eight families to date, since this was activated about a year ago, eight families have been relocated due to violence, with all but one family, including children, and each family received full wraparound services. One family did relocate out of state. Three more families are set to relocate as part of that program. Four families declined services, concerned that they would lose their housing vouchers. So, that's something that we're working on and we've become aware of. Current referral sources are Carillion's Violence Interruption Program, the Police Department, and the city of Roanoke. Carillion Clinic just started their Violence Injury Recovery and Support Program in the last year. They just hired their two Violence Intervention Specialist staff, and they will begin work within the next two weeks. One survivor was referred to apply through the, and, I'm sorry, one survivor and five others were referred to the relocation program for resources. Seven patients were offered some sort of financial assistance, and that could range from help with a security deposit, basic needs after injury, U-Haul for moving, transportation to rehabilitation appointments, and one patient is in the application process to attend Virginia Western Community College. Family Service of Roanoke Valley provides free counseling onsite at the Envision Center by Lansdowne, and a number of individuals and families are participating in that program. We also support Fed Up. Many of you know that's families expecting deliverance using prayer for their monthly grief support, their onsite support after the trauma for families and individuals, and the other arrangements they make in working with those families. And then, Neighbors United, which is the program that we helped fund in partnership with United Way of Roanoke Valley, which has worked with the Police Department to identify a high-density area of violence in the community, and that's in the Hanover area. There's like a five-block section in Hanover, and they've done some very comprehensive work, intentionally reaching out to the neighbors, and finding out what the neighbors need, and then responding to those needs. So, I'll pause there, see if any of the commissioners have anything you all want to add to that, before I go on to what we're proposing for '24.
Vice Mayor, would you prefer we wait until you finish, or ask questions?
We can ask, if you have questions about what I just shared, we can do that now, and then we can talk about, because that was a lot of information. So, maybe it's good to pause.
Everybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question, and that's a very valid point. There's a lot of good information, Vice Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to all of the commissioners that are here, and those that are not here. Certainly appreciate your effort and all your hard work on the Gun Violence Commission. It's a lot of work, and it's important work, and I just wanted to say thank you. If we have follow-up questions, Vice Mayor, do we want us to email those, or who should they be directed to? Because I want to go through it thoroughly to take a look at it.
Sure.
Because there is a lot of information to process.
You could send them to me, or to the commission.
To you?
I'll make sure.
Anybody in particular on the commission, or just to you?
You could send them to Angie.
Okay.
She's our staff liaison.
So, send them to Angie, and she'll get them to the right person?
Yeah. Because some of the questions may be related to an organization that we aren't, like a program we're not directly leading.
Okay, okay. I don't even know that I will have questions. I'm just saying, you know, once I go through it, if I did have questions, where should they go? My second question, based on what you just shared with us, was the, you know, the 26 organizations that applied, and the, you say 600-plus thousand?
Mm-hmm.
That we've got to determine how to allocate. Where, is that information in here on how they're going to be allocated, or how, what the process would be, or?
So, that process is outlined in our funding guidelines, the review process that we adopted.
Okay. So, anybody can access that? Just not for me, but for people who are watching, or who might be interested in finding out what that process is? Where would they find that information?
Angie, do you have more information about that?
I've got like any ongoing funding opportunity?
No, just the review process.
No, just the process for the allocation of these funds.
Oh, so, there is going to be, Laura and I are going to have a meeting. Do you know the date of that? So, after the commission decides the, who they seem to think they're going to award funding to, Laura and I are holding a meeting, a mandatory kind of webinar thing, to go through all of the reporting responsibilities. We're going to talk about ARPA, we're going to talk about these particular reports, and how crucial it is that we get the reports, because we're wrapping up the funding at the end of June.
Yeah. And also, more importantly for me, is how they are going to decide which organization gets the funding. I think for me, I need to, I'm just curious what the burial rule would be, or what the process is for determining which organization out of the 26 will be receiving any of the funding.
Sure.
What are the guidelines?
Gotcha. So, that, we're meeting, Joe and Laura and I are going to be meeting, I think, later this week to talk about that. And then, of course, the commission will meet and talk about that as well. There is a prior rubric, but that is going to be an open meeting. So, anybody can come and watch the commissioners, I guess, analyze and review all of the grant applications, and go through that process. So, I would encourage anybody to attend and watch that.
Yeah. And I guess I'm still not here. So, do we have a process in place?
There is a process in place that was, that was what the commissioners used during the last round of applications as well.
But we're not going to use that same process, from my understanding, are we?
Well, it's going to be expanded upon, to have more clear metrics.
Yeah. Because I know there was a lot of ambiguity, and I think it would be good if we had pretty concise metrics to make sure that there's no question on how you determine who these organizations are that will be receiving the funding. I was just wondering if that's written someplace.
It, it is not written anywhere as of now.
Okay.
But it will be before the commissioners meet and discuss the applications.
Decide on these applications.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me just say, just to follow up on Councilwoman Whiteboard's question, it's important that we stay close to this, because the people that are not granted, for some reason, really who they appeal to, really who they say, why? And Mr. Harvitz Group got this, but we did this. And that's where, I don't want us to get on that track again. We got a little bit there last time, and I want to make sure we're in tune as to what's happening. Because citizens, and I'm very much appreciative of what you, work that you do, but the average John Smith says, City Council, I want you to tell me. I want to know this. And we explain to them that, and I think we can, to a degree. But I just hope that we do this, so that we don't have the ambiguity and the issues that came up last time, because it does come up, and organizations that submit proposals, they think they're going to get that. They feel they should get that. And if they don't, their appeal process is to the mayor. I mean, I'm just using mayor as an example. Their appeal process is to the mayor. I want to know, we want to know, okay. But we can talk about that. I think when you have that meeting, make sure we all know the time, so those of us who can come to be there can make the meeting.
Sure.
But I think that's where we're headed with that now, is because we want to make sure we're still on the right track. And not to look over your shoulder, but when John Smith comes to say, why, I think it should go to you. But they'll come to us as the elected officials in the city. I think that's important.
I think, so, and I don't know if you're familiar with this, but the commission did hold a webinar back in early, mid to early December. Unfortunately, I had a pretty severe cough, so I wasn't able to actually speak. But I was there for that. And Vice Mayor did a good job of explaining the criteria that the commissioners have agreed upon, that they're seeking for these grant applications. And he's indicated that there's about $657,000 in ask, and there's not near that much money to expend through these grants. There is a maximum of a $30,000 grant award, and there is a number of organizations of those 26 who have requested the full $30,000. Others have more, less, around the $10,000. So, there's really not, there is a lot of money that can be approved in grant awards, but not near the ask. And just to reiterate, the Vice Mayor did go through the expectations on that webinar about specifically identifying locations, or northwest Roanoke, looking for intervention strategies and programming for these grants. And we do have a number of applications that were submitted that have really closed relations to intervention strategies.
And my question, not the process of choice, I think is, we need to know, that's all. We need to know, other than the Vice Mayor.
Sure.
You know, you've got six other members on council here that says, okay, somebody call up and say, well, this was said at the meeting. And I said, well, I don't know what was said at the meeting. I'll have to, again, find the Vice Mayor to find out those things, whatever. So, I'm just saying, if we go through this process this time, let's just keep everybody in tune, especially this council. That's important. That's all I'm saying.
And Mayor, the link to that webinar that Angie mentions was forwarded to you all two weeks ago. So, you have that link, so you can view that. And I believe, actually, anyone can view that.
Yes.
That webinar.
It's on YouTube.
Because, yeah, it's on the city's YouTube page.
Okay, I just need to see all the stuff.
Do me a favor. Say, Mayor, you need to look at this link. Because I get links all over the place.
Yeah, all day long.
I get them all the time. Just say, this is one you need to click on. And I'll do, I try to do as much as I can, but sometimes you can't do that. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
So, I'm not doubting that it's not out there. You all did it. We have to do a better job ourselves, and do that. I, you know, I would, no question about that. We have to do a better job. Where you can help us, because I'm sure, like, there, we get a lot of links. I get links all the time, from the Mail's Conference, to NLC, you need to read this. And I'm saying, well, I got to read certain other items here that I'll get to that, and we may not do that. So...
Yeah. And that information will, it was in the weekly update, and it'll continue to be in the weekly update.
Okay.
So, that's where that was, and that's where it'll continue to be.
And you will be welcome to attend the meeting that Laura and I hold with all of the grant recipients as well. I will make sure that you get copied on that link. And again, we'll make sure that you all are aware of the commission meeting, where the commissioners will be utilizing an evaluation tools, and reviewing all of the grant applications to decide the funding.
That's great. That put us right where we need to be. All right.
I do have a question now. Thank you.
That's fine, ma'am.
With regards to the second round of grants that you have now, you and Lori will be reviewing, do you have a deadline as to, once it comes from the Gun Violence Commission, as to when you will be issuing those grant funds? I do know, I did attend that webinar, that these funds have to be, excuse me, have to be used, expended by June 30. And it may be listed in this report, again, just like Councilmember Whiteboard said, there's so much information here, and we have not had enough time to really look through it. So, I'm asking, just so the public would know, I know the deadline is June 30, but do you have a date as to when these grants will be allocated and issued?
So, that week after Laura and I have the meeting with all of the grant recipients, we anticipate getting the MOUs out to the recipients. We want them back within 24 hours, so we can execute the payment for the following Monday, because we realize, we've got, so the commission's going to award a $30,000 recipient. That's a short time period from the time that we actually get this grant to them, $30,000, say, February, if we're lucky, February 1, to expend that, all the way through June 30. So, it's our duty and our responsibility to make sure we get those funds out. In return, to make sure that we're also getting the updated grant reports, and where they are with the expenditures, because the focus is starting to wrap up ARPA during this 2024. And that's why that deadline is set, because staff have to be able to collect all of the reports and do the proper reporting to the Treasury.
So, actually, they will pretty much have about four months, or four to five months, at best, to spend at least $30,000.
At the maximum, yes, ma'am.
At the maximum, right. Or at the least, whatever they're asking for. And they can anticipate hearing from you all by the second week of February, I'm thinking.
The goal will be to have the payment out before February, because that means...
And I'm just saying that, so that's the mayor saying, for those who may not be the successful grantees, they have an idea to be expecting.
Yes.
A response by X amount of time.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And I will follow up with all of those who were approved, and those who were rejected.
Yeah, definitely the ones that were not. Yes, thank you.
Mr. Major, just?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, and Angie pretty much clarified a little bit earlier, communication, I think, is a massive issue.
Yes, it is.
You said something earlier on, is people have tendencies to say, I think I've got a nice package. Here's the one that takes you to do it. Sure, may have to tell you. Nine percent of people get disappointed. You cannot fund $656,000 or $200,000. So, I think at their onset, we should tell them up here.
Yeah.
Tell everybody, here's the ask, here's the funds that they are looking for. If you're more than likely outside of a super project that one can be allocated and executed in four months' time, there's an extremely low probability that you're not going to get what you're looking for.
Right.
Upfront. You know, some people don't like to hear that. Some people may be able to take that message in a different way. But I think it's everyone's responsibility to first set the expectation. Some would call it ambiguity. I would call it anticipation.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? It wasn't ambiguous that they received those. It was more so that the applicants were expecting a certain amount, and they got a lower amount, or they got none in some cases. So, I think the very first step needed over here, as we go through this round of funding, is, and that's for all the leadership, everybody, commissioners, council members as well. Guys, there's limited funding, high demand, it's not going to happen the way you want to. You know, so I would set the expectation right now. As a matter of fact, someone approached me, which I can't even vote on their application, because I am affiliated with them. I told them, you need to start right now, budget-wise, pare it down to what you really want. You know, things that are already subsidized, things that already got some funding going on with it. Just pull that out of your proposed
Just pull that out of your proposed budget, because you may have a better chance of getting what you want, if you're not shooting for the moon on these applications. So, I think all of us should remember that, that very important, and I don't think you need to read, but so much the first line in this proposal, is six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars over twenty-six applicants. Stop, right there. People are going to be disappointed.
Yeah.
But if you, but if you tell someone that it's not going to happen, versus they get this response a few weeks later, and they see somebody else may get another response, then you get the chatter. And I think that's, I just think that's paramount, that we both communicate the expectation over here. Because as a commissioner, we're, at least from my perspective, in my opinion, we're going to, I'm going to vote to be at least fair, because there's going to be a lot of very good proposals, you know what I mean, in here? But everybody can't get what they want. And so, that's, that's, that's how I'm coming into whether I vote on this or not. It's like, okay, tell me what's critical. I give you what's critical, but I might even give you, you know, I give you your wants, I might give you, I'm going to give you your needs, not your wants.
Got you. I thank you, thank you, Mr. Major. Then let me, you, you touched on something I think is really important, and, and let me give you an example. Communication. That has to be, hopefully, get a lot better. I did not know that you all, or you, or maybe our delegate, was working on a grant for one of the city schools regarding that. I did not know that. I don't know if any other council members know that, but here's a grant presented by the Gun Violence Commission.
No, 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 no. It's not a grant. It, it's...
It was a proposal that Delegate Rasul is, Delegate Rasul was making. And here's the delegate that we just had a meeting with a few weeks ago. Had no mention of that. All of a sudden, and then now, what I'm seeing is, is, the way it's reported, that the delegate is working with the Gun Violence Prevention Committee, but making a proposal hoping that he can get the General Assembly to approve some money. Is that not accurate? Is that not what I saw?
It's for Roanoke City Schools. It's not, yeah.
Right. What I'm saying, Roanoke City Schools.
They were just sharing the proposal with us. That's all they...
Well, we did, we did not know. It's our bad. That's all I'm saying is, I didn't, we, I didn't, no.
Neither did we. We didn't either.
Until that meeting occurred.
That's all I knew.
Well, who had idea? Tell me, who had idea?
It was, it was Delegate Rasul who reached out to the city schools six months ago to talk about what schools in the Commonwealth and in Roanoke could do to address youth violence. And this was an idea that he and Roanoke City Public Schools, I think also Petersburg, were addressing, but it's to ask for funding through the General Assembly to do a community builders program, which there's information in here about it. But that was the first we knew of it. The first I knew of it, too.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, but it's, it's Gun Violence Prevention Commission, as it was reported. I'm not saying you say, as it was reported. And Delegate Rasul, and the legislature was right here. Right here. And Gun Violence Prevention Committee is a committee that we put together. And all of a sudden, I see something going to the legislators to prove, and we're in the dark. I'm in the dark. Now, whether you, for which way you go, but I'm in the dark.
But again, but again, Mr. Mayor, we heard, as all of us, you know, the Council College, we all heard about it at the exact same time. We had, we had no, no input into the plan. I kind of questioned it in the beginning, you know, I mean, just looking at it. But we had no input in it. We had no knowledge of it. Therefore, it was impossible for us to, you know, we're not clear on it, so we couldn't tell anybody about it. But then, we have a, what we call a superintendent of the school.
Right.
We have a superintendent of the school who answers, I'm assuming, to, at some point to the board, you know, the school board. The school board, I'm assuming, answers to the commission, to the council.
Correct, correct.
At no point does that information or communication plan involves the gun commission. That's, and to answer that question, I, I would think, I think we're the wrong audience to ask and answer that question, maybe whomever the superintendent of said schools.
They, they will hear from me. Please, they'll hear from me.
Yeah, but it's not...
But I just want to make sure, I'm going through the process of elimination.
Exactly, yeah. So, we, we, you are already eliminated. We are officially eliminated.
I will, I will add that I don't know who decided the process from Delegate Rasul's standpoint, but I know that this was presented, this was shared that night, that it was presented to the school board at one of their meetings in December. So, I, I think that was their first point.
And that might have been the case. And I just, when you came up and said that, we were like, wow. I remember talking to him and I said, I had no idea.
Well, it was reported, it was reported, not you, that the Gun Violence Prevention Committee and Delegate Rasul, along with Roanoke City Schools, are opposing this. And that's how it was reported. And I'm saying, I'm the mayor, I don't know nothing about that.
You didn't know anything.
Right. So, I'm saying, communication, somebody's dropping the communication. But I'll go through the process of elimination and find out, and then I'll let them know how I feel about it. Okay. That's all?
That's fair. It's just...
Yes.
Speaking of communication, I wondered if the council could share what you believe the priorities for funding should be?
The priorities for funding, what the work that you did?
Well, we have three hundred thousand dollars, and where, where do you think, what pockets do you think is most important for that money to go to?
For me, without seeing the proposal, Rabbi, I would not, you know, I would like to see the proposal.
I just mean in general, not, not specific.
Anything that's going to be impactful, reducing gun violence.
So, you're, so you're suggesting that it should be something that reduces gun violence today?
No, I did not say today. I said, reducing gun violence. That's what I said. Yes.
And that's what the people that put us here, the people that put us here, that's what they expect.
And that's why I'm asking you, because, you know, I noticed, and, and we've discussed this, that in our last round of funding, the vast majority of the applications were for youth. And there's a very good reason that you want to approach youth, because that means in the future, you build a safer city. It may not necessarily do a whole lot in the present, though. So, there's always this tension. And I just thought it would be good to know what you all were thinking.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking also, and I, about, oh, I'll come down the line. I was just, again, you know, I've always said that the youth has its place, it's important, but I have to answer to the sixty-five, seventy-five-year-old person that lives on X Street that says, when is this going to stop? I'm scared to sit on my porch. I'm scared to sit on my porch at night. And when it gets, it's dark, I'm afraid to go out. That's where we have to say, and that's why I've always been a proponent of, we've got to, that's great with our young people, but we've got to do something now, because some of these, some of our citizens who carry these signs, I vote, say, hey, look, I want to go be able to go out and be safe at night. And you hear that now. I'm not sure anything you don't hear, they'll tell you that. You just go over certain areas of the city, they'll tell you. That's when's it going to stop? I appreciate what's going on, but what are you going to do? And that's what, that's what drives many of us, is the fact that we've got some good programs, we've got things going to a degree, and especially with our youth, I think the infrastructure is solid. But my always concern has been the senior citizens and concerns of that, who's saying, hey, I'm, I'm afraid. And I think my job, first and foremost of anything I do, is to make sure people feel safe in their homes, feel safe in their residence. That's, that's my job. The first thing I have a priority, that's why my priority, when I was asked for my priority, is community safety. And that's why I want to see everything we can go. And I'm glad Mr., uh, Mr. Pritty asked that question, what can we do? Ask the chief that question, because that's important to us. Because you can't, you know, we've got to do something about that. And I've always said that, that hasn't changed. All right, I'm going to go to Mr., Mr. Bosson.
So, to ask, your question was about what our priorities should be. I think obviously the youth is a priority, but if I'm not mistaken, we've seen gun violence change over the past couple of years, where it's less about youth and more about adult gun violence that's going on. And so, this is where, I know, I've brought this up in the past, but metrics, metrics, metrics. Having those numbers that say, okay, well, it seems like we're doing well with the youth, but we're doing, we may need to do a little bit more with adults. What does that look like? Having those metrics are the best way to, to know how we need to tweak the system as we're going through it. So, I just want to, you know, flag that as, you know, a priority, is to get those metrics, because that helps us determine what are those priorities.
Can I, just, can I follow up to that? I hear the phrase metrics. It would also help to know what kind of metrics you're looking for, because that's a very general question.
Yeah. It's not the metrics that I need, it's, it's what are the things that you guys, as the people on the Gun Violence Convention, uh, Commission, what are the things that you're seeing? What was, how was it in 2021? How is it now? What is the changes that you guys are seeing? Because you guys are the ones that deal with this more than even we do. We know about what happens with the gun violence, and, but you guys are the ones that are sitting there, talking about it and trying to tear into this problem, right? And so, I think that, it's, it's really incumbent on you all to say, you know, we're seeing, this is a pretty good metric of what, you know, youth violence is, or this is a pretty good metric of how we're doing. So, I can't come up with those metrics, but I think it is helpful.
And if I could add something, Mr. Bosson, maybe to, to, to help with that, with, say for example, some of the programs that we did invest in, you know? So, did this program work? And how well did it work? Did this program work? No, it did not. So, maybe these types of programs, when they come in with the application, are not working. But these are, so maybe we could put a little bit more emphasis on those. So, maybe, maybe that's what you're looking to...
Yeah, yeah. It's just looking at what's happening.
Like, it just, just took it all. I don't really have anything to say now. Can't believe that.
Yeah, I don't know.
All right, who's, who's, who's got the floor? Are you done, Mr. Bosson?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I, I yield the floor, yeah.
Another driver.
Did you, yeah?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All has been said, I went back to what the mayor said about the community safety piece. We spoke about that in depth during our September retreat, when we were trying to prioritize what do we see a need on. And it is community safety. So, to, to answer your question, Rabbi, I do believe we have to look at what is going to be important for the community. And it really is what all has been said on this side of the day is, I look at the intervention and prevention side, which includes the police department, which includes the reset team, which also comes back over to Chris Roberts. But I also look at the metric side, when you look at successes. I look at models, what models are out there that have had truly some serious gun violence closer in the Commonwealth, not up north, not in central, not across the California, but what is over here on the southwest side, maybe south side? And looking at what have they done that we are not doing, that perhaps we should be looking at? And also, what has been said by the two councilmembers here? What has worked, what has not worked? And also, when you're looking at, if someone is asking for thirty thousand, do they really need the thirty? Perhaps they may need only half. You're only going to get five months. And should we not look at others who we may not have given money to, that possibly could have? And also, look at partnerships. These are a lot, a lot of nonprofits is going to be vying for the same dollars. Is there a way for them to go in and co-partner and get more bang for the buck, so to speak, than trying to do it by themselves? So, I look at that, and I look at how you, how you all going to measure those outcomes? How did we spend that grant money that came in? Because again, next year, you won't have that opportunity. And also, will those nonprofits have something else in place to keep it going, to sustain, versus just using it one time and they're done? But to be able to say, yes, we are building on that, and we're going to be seeking other grants perhaps going forward to continue a set program.
Thank you.
Can I address that backwards?
Yeah.
So, for, so what you're talking about right now is, and even in the previous cycle, we discuss collaboration. As a matter of fact, it's one of our key metrics on the Rupert that we're talking about is collaboration. You know what I'm saying? And I think we've already addressed the, you know, whether you're going to get all the money or not.
Right.
The pure math of it says, you're not going to get all the money. So, we can pretty much overshadow that one. But also, I want to, from my perspective, also want to address, we don't want to play whack-a-mole. You know what I'm saying? You know, say, what's going on today will be different than tomorrow. And then tomorrow, you judge on what you spent that money over there today for that problem, and another problem arise. To sum all that up is, we look for what we call balance. You know what I'm saying? You can't talk about intervention, prevention, and all of that without saying, one way to prevent it is to also address the youth. That's part of the prevention. So, we want to try to balance those funding over those programs that will have future effects, you know, while we also address those programs that may have more immediate effects. You know what I'm saying? Depending on what they're doing, whether it's community-driven, or whether it's an individual, two or three position-based type programs. I also want to say, which I can't say it over here enough, the old kind of cliche that we would always say over here is, is the glory of the end versus the tyranny of the war. So, we're saying, we can do this, or we can do that. The actual effectiveness is trying to figure out how we can do both. Both address the youth, both address prevention, and both address, you know, some of the immediate issues that's going on. Again, you cannot do all, but you're trying to find the right programs that's going to adequately address each one of those as a priority. Who's, who's giving us the best opportunity to do this and that? You know what I'm saying? We understand what's going on in our communities. We understand, and we see the reports. We know gun violence is still taking place. But we also know where they are coming from. You know what I'm saying? And the only way that you can guarantee your future is to stop what's going to happen right now. Other than that, we will address the immediate issue right now, while the future, while these young kids are still percolating to become exactly what we're trying to stop. You're saying, you cannot, you know, you can't fill a bathtub by leaving the stopper open. No matter how much you flow it in, you know what I'm saying? You put it all out, but if you've got more flowing in, it's going to, it's going to just equalize. You know, it's going to become to an equilibrium that this is going to be the norm, unless we can change those who are coming up while we address it. So, it's not either or. You know, we, our task, even though it may be criticized, because it's definitely difficult, is to try to take the best approach possible, you know, for that glory of the end. And I think that's what we're going to go to. And those are the types of things that we do look for over here. You know, whether it makes sense to some, and that's why you have some people say, hey, I thought I had a great project. But that great project did not necessarily address either one of those at that time. Everything good doesn't mean we're going to fund.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? Giving candy to kids is good. I'm not going to fund that. You know what I mean? But it's still a good project. But it's still a good project. And there's a lot of people who will get, you know, who will get behind giving kids candy. You know? And that's the dilemma that we face when we actually sit down and try to examine all of these opportunities. Which one is a good idea versus which one is an effective idea? And then people get upset when they read about certain things. Oh, that's a good idea. May that be effective. And so that's kind of the dilemma of trying to balance out everything with a limited amount of resources at the same time. And that's why I said the communication is good. Set expectation up front. Understand what we're trying to drive towards, and then just be able to communicate in detail as much as possible why this individual might not have gotten funded or didn't get funded at the level that they want to.
All right, Mr. Pretty. I'll come back to you, Reverend Harvey.
Thank you, Mary Lee. I'm gonna answer the question that was prompted to us, address some of the questions and comments that were made earlier, and then go through a number of other comments and thoughts I've had, so I can concisely have it all together, although concise is probably not the appropriate term. First, I'd like to address the comments that were made earlier regarding Delegate Rasul. And I knew that he came here recently, but that was prior to the time with which he was named Chair of the Education Committee. It's my understanding that in his new leadership role in the General Assembly, especially as he's poised to be placing it on appropriations, and he's focused on education, this is an area where the General Assembly is going to seek to broaden the way in which they address gun violence. Where we give money through DCJS to enforcement, we can give money to education to help focus on mental health and in other ways. And I'm thankful that he's taking this initiative. And I hope that he'll give us an update and a report on that some point soon when he can be successful. But something I want to circle back to. So Section 2-279 of the Policy for Authority Boards and Commissions, I'm just gonna read Section B. And I think I did this maybe in March. In order to obtain the best qualified and dedicated people to serve on such bodies, it is incumbent upon the council to maintain a close relationship with them and give careful and thoughtful consideration to advice and recommendations coming to it from such bodies. There is no sure way to destroy the effectiveness of such a body than to receive, file with thanks, and neglect a recommendation from it. You know, I think this is our third or fourth time meeting with this commission over the past year. This is probably the third or fourth iteration of some form of a strategic plan that we've gotten. And I want to thank you all for working hard to develop this roadmap, for working to collaborate with the council, to find ways that we can grow and work together. I want to bring focus to two of the recommendations, namely Recommendation Number Seven and Recommendation Number Eight. I know we're not going to have conversations really on the membership of the committee, but the recommendation to add youth, I think, would be helpful as non-voting positions, as we talk about looking at youth as a long-term perspective.
Where are you reading from, Mr. Pretty?
This is Addendum Number One. It would be on the next page. We'll have to go to Recommendation Number Seven. I think that this would be a good way.
It's on the back page of.
Yes. For the commission to help bring in that youth perspective that might help give even more insight going forward about how we can fund these youth opportunities without these one-term youth programs that we've seen help with in the past. And then Recommendation Number Eight really points back to some of the comments that Naomi Clements made during her speech today. And this is where I'll answer where I would like to see our prioritization of our funding. She talked about enabling the Climate Action Plan, working with our youth, working with workforce development. Our green spaces, our tree canopy, really finding a way to engage our youth, make them feel belonged, a part of our commission, where they can feel that they have a voice, even if we don't give them a voting voice, so that they're a part of the solution. But to point back to the funding, you know, the American Rescue Plan, when the president put that forward, and it came to localities, really focused on where can you make large, one-time investments to have long-term solutions? And while it won't solve the problem, this is just a few months with which this money can be spent. Really look at which programs are not just asking to fill a gap in their budget, but which ones are putting forward imaginative ideas about how they can work together, where once they obtain this funding and that time has passed, it will continue to live on, even past them in their organizations. That is where I'd like to see a prioritization of these fundings to make people feel safer today, and to really engage with our youth. And I believe that's all my comments, Mr. Mayor.
I do. Any other comments? And then I'm gonna go to Reverend Harvey, go ahead.
Well, I want to cycle back to the previous topic about communication. So if we're done here, I can, or I can wait. So, okay, to your frustration about communication with this Delegate Rasul, noted, everything you said about communication noted. I want to just acknowledge that. And, but I want to try to reframe something a little bit. I think in the work, the five years that I've been involved with this, we're on the cusp of a really, of a turning point, of a pivot point. We actually have Delegate Rasul and RCPS saying, hey, there is an opportunity here, let's go grab it, let's see what we can do. We have a new police chief and a fairly new deputy chief, I've gotten to know Deputy Chief Stokes more just through some of our meetings, coming in with proven track records of reducing gun violence in the places they've served. And I've been, y'all are pretty good at name dropping who you read. And I've been, I have a connection at the Roanoke College Library who finds me things. I really think there is a chance to expand our footprint with connections. I'm noticing that with the Research and Education Committee that I chair, on which Deputy Chief Stokes volunteers and serves, of having more voices at the table. Now, I know earlier you put the ground rule about, you know, appointments. I want to come right up to that ground rule and say, as you all are looking to fill positions, that might be something to think about. Because all, you know, with this new relate, a new emphasis, whatever you want to say, from RPD and work in the community with Roanoke City Schools, there is, I think, a really interesting opportunity here to expand the collaboration, to expand the communication, to expand the network, to have a significant thing. Particularly when it seems to me that, you're talking about metrics now. One of the things that seems to have changed in the years I've been looking at this, a shift from more gang-related things, acts of violence, to what we kind of call conflict resolution by homicide. That seems to have been a big thing for 2023, a lot of what we saw. I'm mad at you, I've got a gun. We've got some things to learn, I think, to pivot. I'm really anxious to hear from Chief Booth at a meeting, you know, to explore that, to educate us more, you know. But I just think there's a really interesting opportunity here, frustrations noted, to change the conversation and the impact of all of this work, of which the commission is one player among many who do fantastic things.
Let me just clarify something, and you're right. I love having everybody at the table. I want us to be, I think we got a good thing going. I'm just saying, I put myself in the place of Nick Saban of Alabama. Listen, we got one play that's gonna end this ballgame. Now, I want us to throw a pass in the flatboard. Tell me what play you're calling. Tell the office court what play you're calling. That's all, I want to know, so I can make sure everybody does their job, that's all. But all of a sudden, you do a quarterback sneak. I didn't know what you were running. And that's all I'm saying. I want the delegate to be, we need that, we need as much push as we can, but just as mayor, let me know. I don't want to read the newspaper, let me know. And the newspaper said, and I don't have it, that the Gun Violence Commission and the delegate has a, gonna go to the General Assembly, and he feels he can do this with the Roanoke City School Board. News to me? That's all I'm saying, I'm not making it complex. I love everybody, we need everybody at the table. We're doing well. It's just the communication piece. Tell me what the play is. That's all. I'm not gonna start the play. I'm not gonna stop it, just tell me what you're running. Okay.
We were at the stakeholders meeting. They came up with this thing.
Right, I understand.
Is that what you're on now? And we heard about that proposal, we heard about it just when the news arrived, and the public heard about it.
I understand. And my precious school board, I didn't know, I didn't know this was in the works. That's all. As mayor, you know, that's all I want to do. Now, councilman, but as mayor, tell me when our delegate, who is sitting here, saying, I'm proposing this for Roanoke City School, public schools. I didn't hear anything from anybody in the schools, from nobody. I read it in the paper. I said, well, whoa, I didn't know this. That's all I'm saying. It's not complex. I mean, put yourself in my place. Okay.
But what I'm saying is, the quiet here is the wrong part.
Well, sometimes you gotta turn around, and maybe, I know. I got you.
The board that reports to you.
I got you. But I don't want there to be any doubt that I don't appreciate what you're doing, what we're doing. That's all.
I acknowledge that. I'm just looking from my perspective and looking at where the pieces on the board are lining up. I'm like, wow, we've not been quite at this point in five years, and I'm pretty excited about the next 12 months.
That's it, all right. Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, Commissioner, thank you for your service. Anything else?
Just.
Scott, we gotta go through the rest of this.
No, I just wanted to highlight two things as we look ahead, because I think we've covered some of those. But I did want to circle back on a couple of things. Reverend Harvey mentioned something, a significant shift that we've seen this last year from youth violence, to, not saying that there is an absence of youth violence, it's taken some different forms. We've seen an increase, I think, certainly in dating violence. But we've seen a significant shift to interpersonal violence amongst adults. And your phrase, conflict resolution by homicide, was pretty accurate. So I think we need to continue to work collectively on violence interruption and what that looks like. It's hard to preempt violence when it's gonna happen. You can't be with somebody 24/7. But to make sure we're getting resources out there to help people navigate that better is important. I think we've done some substantial work in bringing forward credible messengers, but I think we can do more in that regard. I think there are some challenges that exist, that we have to look at that. And then something that Councilwoman White Boyd mentioned that we'd actually had some conversations about last year, but I think we really want to pull this up as a priority. And that is a trauma response team. And you could say that our, and this is pre-reset. So this is on the site, that would be a team that would work, not in the way of, but alongside and in cooperation with the police, with fire NMS, with trained professionals, mental health specialists, trauma-informed specialists, that could be there to work with folks who've experienced the trauma of the event, connect them with resources, encourage them to go to the hospital, the variety of things that go with that. And so that's gonna be a real priority, because that's something that needs to happen. I know our police and our fire NMS do what they can, but their focuses are very different on the crime scene. So, and this, again, chief, is not be in the way, but to work alongside. And we have some element of that already with the Marcus Alert Program, which has proven to be very effective in cases of mental health crisis. But this is different, because it's treating the trauma directly and responsibly. So I just wanted to highlight those couple of things. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all. Happy New Year to you. All right, we're gonna take a seven-minute recess and come back. All right, we're gonna come back and go on and talk about the issues that we need to consider, take action on, in our concerned agenda.